Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll call it order, the Select Board May 9, 2018 meeting. No changes to the agenda tonight. Libby have announcements?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded, and if you are going to be speaking, please come to this mic here. That one is not working right now. We are not using it. We have 2018 Committee, Board, and Commission vacancies coming up. There are a lot of opportunities for volunteering. We have a couple of public hearings regarding the applications. The first is on May 23. The second is on... Can you go up a tad? No, down more. The second is on June 6, and then the final appointments are made on June 27. There's a lot of information on the town website if people are interested in volunteering. We have our first of what will be at least two and probably several or more thereabouts Coast to Resiliency workshops tomorrow, starting at 5:00 p.m. upstairs in the training room. And we... There's some information about this on the town website, and also we've been pushing it out on social media. The idea is that we invite the public, which we're trying really hard to get to, so if you're listening or hear, please come to us if you are able. We're really looking for people to give their input on what the town should be focusing on with the Coastal Resiliency Plan. Next week is National Police Week, and we have a proclamation. I don't know, Chief, do you want to mention anything about it? Or... Okay. We do have some departmental awards at next week's meeting. But if... Maybe if one of you or somebody wants to read the proclamation?
What do you like to read? Chair? Okay. "The proclamation, National Police Week, May 13 to the 19th, 2018. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated Tuesday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week that May 15 falls on as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Nantucket Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Nantucket. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the member of the Nantucket Police Department unseasonably provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, the Select Board of the Town of Nantucket call upon all citizens of the Town of Nantucket to observe the week of May 13 to the 19th, 2018, as Police Week. During this week, citizens are encouraged to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in so doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Town of Nantucket to observe Tuesday, May 15, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Signed this ninth day of May, 2018."
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've also got a proclamation here for you all to sign after the meeting. The last announcement is a public hearing that's going to be held here at the high school cafeteria next Thursday, May 17, at 6 o'clock regarding the design of three intersection improvement projects, Four Corners, Bartlett Road in Surfside, and Old South Road in Fairgrounds. And I think we're at the 25% design phase, and we're seeking public input or comment on those projects.
Okay. On to public comment. Is there anyone here like to speak on something not on the agenda? Please come over to this microphone. State your name, please. For the record. It's a long walk, sorry. You look better on camera over here than over here.
My better side. Bob DiCosta, I am making public comment to your board, but I don't believe it's actually directed to them, but I'm hoping you can talk to our steamship representative about it. I believe that we have a problem here with the current boat schedule for the slow boat, which has been the same boat schedule since the '80s, and the amount of people that are living here now are probably fourfold what was there then. I'll give you a couple examples. I tried to get back on island the week before Daffodil. I was told there were no reservations to get back for six days prior to Daffodil. Well, I said, "Okay, it's Daffodil. Like, you know, everybody's bringing their antique cars." I went down today to try to get an excursion off for the weekend. I can get off on Saturday, but I can't get my truck back until May 26. I tried to make reservations at Christmas to get off the week before Thanksgiving, and they told me there was nothing available two weeks prior to Christmas. So I went down a week before to get an excursion ticket. I got there at 3:00 in the morning, and I was number four in line. Now, the boat schedule for the slow boat, for vehicles, has not changed in almost 30 years, and it's time that they do something about it. You can't go on the freight boats anymore now because they're carrying all the hazardous material, so you can't even get a car on those boats now. So it's actually worse instead of better. So if you could talk to the representatives of the steamship and see if there's something they could do about it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
We can add that to an agenda if you want to discuss. I know it's an issue that a lot of people aren't talking about.
We could pass it along, and also for people's information, the steamship is meeting here next Tuesday at 9:30 at the Wailing Museum.
Any other public comment? Not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to new business. There's nothing that I know of. They get a motion to approve minutes of May 2, 2018?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Unless there's any objections, we'll consider the payroll warrants and treasury warrants approved. On to pending contracts. Libby, is there anything you wanted to go over? Any questions from the board?
I don't think I had anything in particular. They're pretty straightforward. The item with the townwide roadway line striping, I think you recently approved a nighttime working, so they can try to get that stuff done at night, and...
We've done that last couple of years.
Yeah.
Right. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Superior, I'm on here. Okay, moving on to consent items. We have a request from Habitat for Humanity for waiver of sewer connection fees and sewer privilege fees for lots 86 and 87 on wait drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss. Are they shy eligible, these houses?
Yes.
They are? Then I'm on board. Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's our policy to waive these fees for nonprofits, and I think it's just coming here for a ratification.
Except that there's two...
Permanently affordable.
Permanently affordable, and there's a couple tiers. And we've had issues where they haven't been previously, not with these guys, but other entities. So that's...
I think that gets clarified before it comes to this board.
Thank you. Citizen Department request. We have a Nantucket Center for Elder Affairs review of 2017 Needs Assessment Study. Is there someone here that would like to present, speak on this?
Hi, I'm Julie Miss Gerald. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Nantucket Center for Elder Affairs. Here are several other members of our board. Jeanne Grimmer is our treasurer. I see Mr. Cram, and I see Mr. Fitz in the back. Basically, the Nantucket Center for Elder Affairs, we're a nonprofit organization. We were created in 1975. We serve as sort of the friends of the Nantucket Salt Marsh Senior Center. However, in Nantucket being Nantucket, it's sort of a unique situation that we actually own the building where the Salt Marsh Center operates, use with town employees, functioning as program manager, and other people servicing the senior center. The current center was built in 1985 with funds provided by NCEA. It was originally built to serve about 200 seniors. We now serve well over 500 seniors. And basically, we sort of, over the last few years, sort of felt that the senior center or the facility was really not adequate to serve the number of seniors, provide the programming that was needed for those seniors. And we also felt that there were other issues affecting seniors on Nantucket that really hadn't been addressed or that were concerned, such as, you know, medical issues, transportation, support system, community support for seniors. So we commissioned a study called Aging on Nantucket: A Community Needs Assessment. It's done by the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston, and I think in your package there's some portions of that report. It's fairly lengthy because it also included a survey and has a lot of charts and answers and so forth to survey questions. UMass has done about 20 of those surveys or studies or more for other communities in Massachusetts, usually as a precursor to those towns, looking into either building or expanding their senior center or services for their seniors in their community. We're very fortunate that that study, which was not inexpensive, was funded by grants by the community foundation, Nantucket Fund, and Remain of Nantucket. So that report, we presented to the community in several forums in February, and we also wanted to bring it to your attention as well. That assessment used focus groups, key informant interviews, and a survey. And the survey went out to about 2,800 seniors in Nantucket. There was a list compiled by our town clerk. There were about 730 surveys returned. So basically, again, a lot of that information is in the packet material that was presented to you. But there's also an executive summary, and there were recommendations from the report. Again, those are included in your packet. The recommendations basically identify a lot of issues such as transportation, housing needs, community support, and other matters impacting seniors on Nantucket. But our particular focus as the NCEA is on the recommendations that regard the physical space, programming at the senior center, and communication about the senior center and its activities and resources. So we feel that as a community, we need to address these issues. We need to prepare for the growth of senior center participation. You know, all the demographics basically indicate there's going to be, you know, expanding senior population. Nantucket has less staff and space than any other peer centers, is supported by statistics that are provided by Emmett Schmarzo from the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And again, those statistics are in your packet. Basically, we have the smallest senior center per square foot out of 14 communities that he has indicated in the study that he's... We provided. And a quote from the executive summary, "It basically is a shared goal among study participants that better space be made available to the Salt Marsh Senior Center in support of both improving access to the current programs and supporting expansion of the programs and services." You know, and this should in no way be read as any criticism of the staff there, and in fact, the study indicated how well-respected the staff members are in specific comments in the survey to that effect. And Laura Stewart gave me a list of the programming, and considering the space size we have at the center, it's amazing what they can do. And I'm not sure how many of you have actually been to the senior center, but it's really one main room. There's sort of a portable screen to divide it up, but that doesn't really help with the noise. So if there's the congregant lunch taking place, there's really no other activities that can take place at the same time. If there's a card game taking place, sometimes we have our meetings there. So basically, the noise from the card game carries over into our meetings and vice versa. So it's very difficult to have multiple activities taking place there. You know, there's also limited parking on the site. And these are the activity level... A list that Laura Stewart gave me that we can share with you. And again, that's just a piece of it, but we really can't expand the programming in the current space. It's just very difficult. There's just not really any way to do that at this point. The other focus, I think, brought to our attention from the study is the real need to communicate about the senior center and its activities and resources, and getting this information out to the community and to the seniors in the community. Some of the suggestions were having special events to attract the younger seniors. The largest group that's using it are the 70 to 79 age group. Using more resources of internet, newspaper, social media, and so forth, again, to try to get and reach the current and potential users of the senior center. And I think, again, the recommendations were to improve our communications with other senior stakeholders in the community, the Council on Aging, Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands, Human Services, PASGON, and other entities that provide services to the seniors in the community. Another item that came out in the report is that there's really a lack of centralized information and referral service for seniors on the island. We do not have an outreach worker at the senior center. Almost every other community in Massachusetts has one. And again, that would be the central source of information of where you might go if you needed to use the our-island ride or transportation off-island for medical services, or even what programming would be at the senior center. So basically, we as NCEA, being a nonprofit organization, are integrally involved with the building and the Salt Marsh Senior Center, and we certainly want to work with the town and other agencies so that we can kind of address these issues and take care of the seniors in these matters. So we really need to address the physical structure to provide a dynamic senior center on Nantucket, need to address the programming needs to meet the social health and wellness needs of Nantucket residents over 60. And again, the communication piece is very important, and how to reach people and give them the information that they need. So basically, we're asking the Board of Selectmen to create a work group to address these issues. You know, again, we're very part... Involved in this, and we would like to be part of this and active in any, you know, future proposals to work with the town for hopefully a new or enlarged senior center, new programming. And again, I think the communication piece is very important.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just, what would you see the charge of this work group to come up with? Implementation strategies for the recommendations?
Yes, I would... Yes. And again, our main focus is really the facility, the programming, and I think the communication portion of this. You know, there were other issues that were brought up about transportation and so forth. I mean, they're part of the picture. I think there are other entities addressing it. I mean, for our purposes, we're really looking at the fact that we're at a crossroads with the existing structure. We can't basically have much more programming there on that site. So yes, that would be, I think, the purpose of identifying potentially other space, and larger space for a senior center.
And that would include either that site or another location, I would think.
Yes. I mean, at some point, it was quite a number of years ago, 10 or 15 years ago, I know, we actually had a building permit to enlarge that building on the site. I think now with the flood zone building requirements, we'd be in a much different situation, and we can't add to parking. And it really... It gave some additional space, but probably not for the numbers of seniors that we're looking at now. Would it necessarily be cost-effective to do it on that site? But again, I think part of the charge would be for the work group to look at alternative sites.
I mean, I'd really like to move something forward with looking into an alternative site for the senior center and to also ideally charge a group with the elder services being a large component, but to consider combining it with other services in a larger facility like a community center. Would be... You know, we've talked about this a little bit before, but I think it's an opportunity to encompass even more.
I have a question. What is the Mexican train game?
I don't know.
It's once a week, there, or maybe I shouldn't ask that question.
Maybe something we all need to go in a...
Matt, you really read the whole assessment.
Yeah.
I only read the good stuff.
That one caught my eye, too.
Dominos, okay.
For the record, it's a Dominos game?
My dad loves Dominos.
Read it. Do you have any thoughts or comments?
No, I think Dawn... I agree with Dawn on looking at opportunities to combine. And I did wonder what the Mexican train game was, so I'm good.
You know, again, that's for discussion as a work group. When I did speak with the gentleman from the state, he did indicate that communities are basically going for senior centers for... As a senior center. And that just seems to be the direction that they're going. You know, again, it's, I think, for the work group to see what works for our community, but that's just kind of statistically what they've been looking at.
And do you have a thought on who the sponsor of the work group should be? Do you see that as a Board of Selectmen, or is it your group?
I guess I would see it as a Board of Selectmen. I think ultimately, it ends up this is municipal kind of responsibility for the senior center. I think it's been a very unusual situation where a nonprofit owned the building, and it was used by the town for this function. It's just one of those kind of Nantucket oddities that kind of took place over the years.
Makes sense. I just want to...
Actually, one question was, it sounded like in the summary that one of the issues of the recommendations was improving the outreach or the information about programming. Is that something that you feel can do now, or is that something that will come out of the work group?
I think everyone is sort of working on it. I think what the concern is, is whether or not it's getting done piecemeal through different organizations. So again, I think it's sort of... The idea would be to come up with some centralized entity, whether it's through the senior center or some other place that are entity or organization is identified. But it does seem that needs to be sort of a centralized position so that people would know where to go and who would have that information. And I know, I think, Human Services is looking, is maybe presenting or working on some kind of a grant, I think, in order to... I don't want to misquote what exactly they're doing, but I think it's somewhat to find a way to kind of coordinate the different services and having that information sort of always sort of current and available in one location. I don't know whether it may have been a notebook or something that had been done many years ago that they may try to bring back so that, again, there's sort of a cohesive source of this information.
This was slightly discussed when we were doing the... Talking about moving our-island home and building the campus. This was one of the, you know, one of the small... One of the suggestions that came up is that was a high, you know, high-ground area, that we'd have like a bit of a campus. It would be, you know, more stuff going on than that.
To use for the existing facility?
Well, we were talking about... We were talking about potentially a new...
Because we were also talking about reuse too.
Yeah, we talked about reuse in the existing and/or making a campus there, but it never really...
Right.
So this isn't new. This is helpful in showing the need.
Right. And some, you know, some of the discussions we've had, just sort of off the top, just to think about it, I mean, some people have talked about whether or not the facility, the VFW or something, would be a facility. We've talked about whether if the, you know, were the... What would be the... If the new fire station is built, maybe the old fire station location. Trying to think, somebody else, if there are any other locations. Maybe somewhere out at Sherburne Commons or something. You know, and again, that's something that a work group needs to look at, evaluate at the cost, and basically the size of the facility that we needed. You know, we've, again, spoken to this gentleman, Emmett Schmarzo, from the state, and he has a lot of statistics about what other communities have built, you know, that square footage per seniors that they've built. He sent me an email, and he said he's really encouraging when they're building these to not build them too small. He said, basically, if you build it, they will come. And he actually, in one of the emails that he sent me, he was talking about several other locations where he encouraged them to build larger. And in fact, within a year, they were filling up their exercise classes. They had planned on 50 people, and in fact, they now didn't have enough space in that room for those exercise classes and parking and so forth. And one of the gentlemen on our board has just indicated that particularly in the summertime, our exercise classes here are full, and they frequently are in the winter, too, but people are turned away from the exercise classes here. And that's a huge component for our senior center and what seniors are looking for.
I had a quick question on... A work group like this would just, I'm guessing, would just look at a senior center or building, but would it also include some of the other recommendations of looking at transportation solutions? Or the one thing that I liked that was addressed was keeping seniors in their homes longer, whether it's fixing the doorway or creating more programs like that? Or should it just be, I guess it's a question for you and the board, what makes more sense?
Well, I think our focus is mostly, I think, on the physical facility as well as the programming, and I think then the communication piece of getting out that information of what's available to bring people in and let them know what's there. You know, I certainly think you need to, I guess, decide what you think of these other ones, or I think they're all important. I think that's the difficult part. I think as far as transportation, I know Paula Healy's have been at some different meetings we've all been to, and we've discussed some of that as well. And again, I think the hard part is making this a whole cohesive plan for all of the senior needs. But I guess, I think the facility itself and the program and the communication is a pretty big chunk to take on.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure whether these other ones, I think, may be taken care of by some of the other entities that are involved in that anyway.
I just want to make sure that all the good work in this study, you know, hopefully, I don't know if it's elder services or different, you know, organizations can take it and kind of run with it.
So I guess just my own thought is that the program's really going to drive the build, drive the size, and, you know, what... So my thought would be that you, you know, if you're building a, you know, whatever kind of facility, you've got to decide what services are going to be in there, what the staffing's going to be, how frequently are they going to meet, and then that'll drive your decision on how big the building needs to be.
Right. And basically, the programming's limited by the size of the building to some extent, yes.
Well, I know, but I mean, if you kind of take a blank slate and say, in an ideal world, this is what we'd like to develop, and my own view, that work precedes any kind of discussion about where, how big, how many stories, all that kind of stuff. But that's just my own thoughts.
How big are you now?
I'm sorry?
How many square feet is it now?
The existing building is about 3,000 square feet, and that includes actually some office space that's dedicated to town use by Human Services, the contract administrator and so forth. And again, it's really one large room. There's a kitchen and sort of the entry room, so...
And the fire station's 8,000 to 10,000 square feet, depending on how you look at it. So that's one. And I don't want to throw a wet blanket on this, but some of this also we have to attach numbers to. And say, we're doing this many more programs. What's the cost? How is it paid for? How much is that increasing? You know, we have to do our homework there, too, because we have competing... A lot of competing interests. So it's sort of, we have to be reasonable when we do this.
Again, all that stuff, I would think you'd want to flesh out before you hire an architect to design a new facility.
Yes. And again, the gentleman from the state has a lot of this information, and he's been involved in a lot of the newer senior centers that have been built, and he's willing to come down, and I think we're going to ask him to come to one of our meetings very soon. But he has a lot of the information that I think would be questions that you would have about, you know, the facility and the size and, you know, what other places have done with similar, you know, numbers of seniors in the community. I mean, just simply, for example, based on the statistics that are in one of the sheets that were given to you, I think our square footage is about, you know, one square foot per senior based on the existing facility. And I think it's 3.8 square feet per senior was the average on most of the other facilities, and some went as high as seven square feet, and that was one of the newer ones, which is actually kind of maxed out as far as some of its participation in classes already within, I think, a year or two.
If we could figure out how to do a 20,000-square-foot senior center, that'd be great.
Well, and I realize it's all budget and, you know, and that's all has to be part of the whole plan, yes.
And would there be funding required to engage the gentleman you are speaking of?
No, he's an employee of the state, so he's willing... He's come down before, which is how we found out about this study, and that's why we...
We could have him come to a board, a select board meeting. I'd really like to, you know, hear someone who's passionate about this, as you are on the state level and has had experience with other centers.
Do we need any direction or motion or anything, or do we feel comfortable with how we're moving forward with this, or if we are? Do we want to have another discussion?
Work group or possibility to form a work group would have the gentleman from the state come before we form the work group? Or like that. I mean, I'm happy moving forward with the work group of some sort, some guidance would be great.
That would sit within the Select Board, the town administration? Just making sure we don't leave this conversation without some... How we're moving forward or not.
And we have to link it to our strategic plan, where we... And part of that process was to make sure we allocated resources, just, you know, reminding us all. And because when we add more duties onto the town manager...
Something has to come off.
Something has to come off. So I think it needs some conversations. But I think, I mean, I think we should, but what's going to slip?
So I think maybe we'll have another discussion, whether internally or at another Select Board meeting on how this fits in. select board meeting on how this fits into everything, timelines, when can we get it done? What fiscal year would it go in? All those questions for our work group. Anything else? Libby, do you need any, any other thoughts, direction?
I appreciate the comment about the strategic plan and the other items that are already kind of on the docket here. We also have a whole lot of projects in our capital improvement plan and this is not in there at all, although it's good to be talking about it now. And it's certainly not the first time a senior center slash community center type of idea has come up. Probably one of the first things that would happen would be some kind of a feasibility study of, to define the program as was mentioned and to define a location and a size and all the usual things that would go into a building project like this, probably with some kind of a work group. I might want to try to find out from some other towns how they went about it. Maybe Emmett has some ideas about that. But I, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact, and I'm sure that everybody is, is there are, you know, limited areas for this. There may be some areas of town owned land that can be looked at, but we need to really think through what we're using the town land for, because there isn't really any more of it. And maybe we want to put in more than one function into this project.
Okay.
So, but I like the idea of Emmett coming down to, to talk about how other towns have approached it.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
If the board agrees.
And maybe we add a tour through strategic planning, one of our sessions, just to say, how are we going to, are we going to fold this in rather than, rather than going off and setting up a work group with, so. Because we, yesterday we spent a lot of time talking about our housing goal, number two, which is to come up with a plan for affordable housing for town employees. And the first thing we talked about was the, what's the inventory of town owned land where we can put up buildings for, and so there's a competing, you know, need there.
Or there's things in process that's going to help us get, move us along, but we don't have yet. In your comments?
I guess I'm a little unclear on where this is going.
Well, we're not, we're trying to, I think we're trying to figure out how we fit it into everything else that's going on.
Right.
We're doing a strategic plan to try to keep things like focused. Where does it go into the capital program committee? If it's a feasibility study, how much would that cost? How long would that take? Who would do it? So I think the next step we'll be talking to is that Emmett?
Emmett Schmarzo from the state, right.
Emmett, and then figuring out how do we fit in a work group, who's on it? I just, I think we all, I think we all feel it's very, it's important and we want to have the conversation now, but I don't know if it would, work group's going to happen next week.
Could we invite him to a meeting? Would you like to do that?
I, I think basically what the towns have done, if they've done these studies that we had done by UMass Boston, and that was a precursor to basically the next step, where they basically identified the need for the senior center and that's when they moved forward. I'm, you know, again, I can't speak for Emmett, but I think that's kind of where these things went. And I think there's another sheet that I'm not sure got distributed to you, but it was basically his recommendations of kind of physically what would be in a senior center, whether it goes from specific types of bathroom facilities or, or space for certain activities and that kind of thing. So, you know, I think he can help you maybe on those specifics, but, you know, again, I can't speak for him.
Could you circulate that to us? I'd like to see.
Yes, I think it was email I sent to.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever you emailed, I forwarded.
And I would, I would suggest all board members to go, if they haven't been there for a while, to take not more than two at a time, just a walk through and see how everything works. And I remember teaching a class there a while ago and there was a meeting over here and something else going on over here. It's busy.
And I think there are some other people on our board or that involved in the senior center who might want to speak if we can give them a moment.
I think we could take one or two quick comments.
So again, I guess it's a little unclear to me. So you're going to put this back on another agenda for reconsideration or, okay?
I think, well, I think, you know, Dawn and I, when we meet with Libby to look at what's coming up on the agendas, kind of see where this fits in with them and how do we go forward.
Okay. And again, I guess, you know, we're obviously very much involved in this since we own the building, so we would be there like, be part of the whole planning process or possible, or at least be aware of what the town's doing and moving forward on. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Libby, comment?
My name is Jerry Crown. I exercise at Salt Marsh. There are two groups who exercise. The group at nine that we call the senior, I call the senior seniors. And then there's the younger group at 10 to 11. And very often in the summer, people cannot get in for safety reasons, there could only be so many people that fit in the room. The seniors greatly appreciate being able to move around and come in and their class is very crowded. They need more space. My class will graduate into their class and the population is not getting any younger. We really need more room. I exercise in California in February and there's a terrific senior center. I brought back photographs and they have expensive programs for the, I'll pass around these photographs. They have a large exercise room with a stage at one end, so additional activities can be had in the room, whether it's musical, whether it's the exercise people on a stage so everyone can see them and they're not going this way trying to see what they're doing. There's also a wall of NIZEL business partners, all the partners in town, the businesses.
Could you speak into the microphone? Could you speak into the microphone so people watching at home can hear you?
I'm sorry. There's also a wall of business partners in the area and that's exhibited for people who come to the center. There are many notices. They do all sorts of activities like we do here, a heart day, a day where you're talking about your, your estate planning. These things do happen around the island, but I think they'd be, they should be happening at the senior center. And if we had a proper building for it, we can have all these things going on at once.
Thank you. Sounds like we need to get you on the work group. Any other comments? Board, are you okay?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of this. Just figure out the best way to go about it and timing.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, for coming and speaking on this. Okay, we're going to move over to the town manager's report. Libby?
The first item is a recommendation to extend the terms of the government study committee members. And as the board maybe remembers, the town code contains a requirement to have a government study committee every five years. One was appointed last year. However, the terms as specified in the code are for one year. And I, I think it's safe to say the committee is nowhere near close to finishing up any kind of a report or recommendations. So the recommendation at this point is to simply extend the terms until their work is complete without necessarily a specific date at this point. And we can certainly check in with them from time to time to see where they are. But in order for them not to have to reapply and go through all of that, we wanted to recommend that they just keep going until they're done.
So a vote by this board without, can change that. We don't have to do anything else in terms of publishing notice.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation to extend the work, to extend the terms until the work is completed or June 30th, 2020, whichever is first.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously?
Okay. Natural Resources is here. Caitlin Shaw, our water quality biologist, and Jeff Carlson, our natural resources coordinator. And we've got an overview of the 2017 water quality testing results. This is kind of an annual thing that we've been doing and we often have had an afternoon session, not a board, at a board meeting, but I think the attendance at that has been quite low, so we thought maybe we would just give an overview here at your meeting.
Caitlin may want that. Yes, Greg? I'm just going to kind of introduce Caitlin and kind of preface this by saying, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to review the water quality data from the two harbors. So from Nantucket and Matican Harbor, we'll be discussing the ponds in more detail at a later date. And wanted to kind of point everyone to some dates to still be kind of determined to discuss pond management and the water quality results of the ponds. But to at least point people to the town website to start looking at that draft planning document on the pond management principles, to participate in that discussion as it comes up in, in June and July and when those things kind of go forward. And with that, I think the, the purpose of this year is just to review the testing from 2017, to run through what the results and kind of the trends are, and then have discussion with you guys wherever you want to take it. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our water resource specialist Caitlin Shaw.
So today I'll be going over just the 2017 update to just give a little overview for anyone that's new or hasn't heard a presentation by me before. We regularly monitor the harbors and ponds from June to September. We monitor them for a number of water quality parameters, dissolved oxygen, algae. We'll be monitoring eelgrass this year with side scan sonar to relate that to the results from the 2015 survey. And the reason why we do this is because nitrogen is the limiting nutrient for algae and plant growth in marine systems. And that's the primary nutrient that also, if it's readily available, will drive algal growth and lead to shifts in the habitat, habitat type. So we talk about nitrogen a lot in terms of the harbors because that's the nutrient that will be driving kind of those algal blooms that can cause some issues for the shellfish in the system. So we also work with state agencies to ensure that the waters are healthy and swimmable and fishable. So that deals with bathing beach testing that we do with the health department and monitoring with the division of marine fisheries for contamination sources for shellfish. And so I just gave a little, three figures, three images here to show why we talk about nitrogen and what it might look like. Low nitrogen conditions or a healthy system will be, have a lot of eelgrass, it'll be healthy, it won't be covered in epiphytes, which are kind of a growth of algae that will grow on the blades if there's high nutrient conditions. In high nitrogen, you still might have eelgrass, but it might also be mixed with seaweed or the leaves might be highly covered in algae, which is not beneficial for that. The reason why we're relating water quality to eelgrass in the first place is because eelgrass is a very good habitat for fish and shellfish, which is very important to Nantucket's economy. In very high nutrient conditions, you'll have a lack of eelgrass and you'll just have a lot of seaweed, which isn't good habitat. And so this figure here, it's kind of a speedometer type figure. It's just showing, in order to show our trends, I've been trying to come up with a, a way to show those trends because we've taken 235 samples last year just in the harbors. So, and there's a lot of different trends that we're looking at. And so these, these speedometer type figures show, are a good way of indicating what our long-term and short-term trends are. So green on the left-hand side of this figure would be excellent conditions, good conditions for eelgrass growth. Yellow would be improving conditions and red would be degraded. And these, I'll go through the different harbors and there'll be a figure like this on the subsequent slides. And then red is a degraded system that doesn't have eelgrass. So the blue line on the figure is going to be our goal, which is based off of a number of biological, chemical and physical studies that were done in the past to determine that goal for each system specifically. The black line will be 2017, so last year's data. And then the gray line will be the six-year average. So that's giving us an idea of where, where we've been heading, basically. And I just wanted to get, make this little point that these numbers, when we do see there are some figures and those values on the figures are, sometimes it's hard to tell what those values mean. And so I put this here to indicate that 0.01 milligrams per liter in terms of a reduction actually requires a 37% reduction in input. So those numbers make a really big difference and require a lot of work in terms of land management of our nutrient inputs. So Nantucket Harbor is a good story. So in terms of 2017, we see our goal, I'm looking at the Sentinel Station, which is the station at which if the water quality improves there, then the other stations will have also improved because it's located in an area that, that is further into the system, which receives a little bit less flushing than the other stations. So we talk about either the average conditions or we can talk about that Sentinel site, which is where our regulatory goal is set. So in terms of our Sentinel Station, which is in the head of the harbor, our 2017 values for that station are right on the line between the healthy and the improving conditions. And the, that station has been improving over not only the six-year averages, but also the historic conditions. If you do look on, at the figure with the, the larger figure here, we're looking at basically the dark blue is the background concentrations in the ocean. That's our, our, basically the water that's coming in from the ocean. And then the other, the other colors, so the grayish color would be quays, there's the darker blue, which is the lower harbor and then the head of the harbor would be the top line that you're looking at here. So you'll see variation and I just want to point out that inter-annual variation, so variation from year to year in our water quality results are basically caused by differences in the weather. So differences in precipitation and temperature are going to cause these differences in the, the yearly variation in, in those results. However, in terms of maintaining or achieving a nutrient goal, we're looking for three years of achieving that concentration that we talk about in the speedometer figures. In other metrics of water quality, the dissolved oxygen was acceptable. Dissolved oxygen's important, important for fish and shellfish because they require oxygen to breathe, just like we do. The algae biomass was also acceptable. Too much algae can cause issues as well. So we did see a couple of different, we do track the harmful algae that's present and we did see a couple of elevated situations that we report to the division of marine fisheries. There is also a small fish kill in the creeks and this was attributed to higher than usual tides that trapped those fish in that system, so there wasn't enough oxygen for them. So we do track those kind of anomalous events as well.
We take questions as we go through the harbor?
Oh, yeah.
So, so the ocean is kind of your, like your standard that you apply or compare against?
Yeah.
So in 2015, just looking at the statistics, when the ocean was, quote, I guess I used the word improving, our, our harbor eroded, the head of the harbor eroded? In 2015, when the ocean, when the ocean was doing pretty well relative to our head of the harbor, statistics kind of shot up. Is there a reason for that, that you can?
So I think in 2014 is the lower value from 2012 to 2017.
Yep.
And then 2015 is more elevated, is that what you are noticing?
The variation between the ocean lines in that, in 14 to 15, is not as significant as it is in the harbor. There's, the peak is. There's, the peak is much more significant. And I'm wondering if there's a reason for that.
Yeah, so those differences in precipitation and, and weather patterns basically get amplified in those systems because they're, they're, they're receiving input from all of the area around them. So you might not see the same variation between the ocean that you would see in the more enclosed systems.
So they're not, they're not systems that move in parallel necessarily?
No, not necessarily. Also, 2015, just as a point of reference, was also a very bad year for cochlea dinium, a certain type of algae that had a very big bloom that year. And so that's also why we would see the elevated concentrations, because as, as the algae uses up nitrogen and then recycles it, you're going to see that in the results as well.
Rita.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we know what percent of the input reduction we need to get into the high-quality area?
I, we have that information from the MEP reports, but off the top of my head, I wouldn't, there's so many sites, I would have to look at the report.
Okay.
Yep. So Pulpus Harbor is a sub-embayment of Nantucket Harbor and has its own nutrient-related goal. The trend for Pulpus Harbor is not the same for Nantucket Harbor. The 2017 values were slightly lower than the six-year average, but in comparison to the historic, they are still elevated concentrations. So the water quality is degraded in Pulpus Harbor compared to the, compared to Nantucket Harbor. The dissolved oxygen was acceptable, and there was a little bit of elevated algae biomass in August. And there were a couple of harmful algae, algae species present that we did talk to the DMF about as well. In terms of Pulpus Harbor, we do also measure the inputs to Pulpus Harbor, so a couple of streams that enter into the harbor, and we have been working on talking about best management practices to improve some of those techniques as well. Do you have any questions about Pulpus Harbor?
I just, again, go back to the statistics, go back to the harbor. So to Rita's point, I just don't know if by reducing the inputs at, at a rate of .01 milligram, you will ever reach the goal. So, because I'm saying, if it's, if you reduce, you're at, currently we're at 3.375 or so.
Yeah, so I think that-
And then if we, if we reduce it even .1, we would get to .275, which is about, you know, and then that, so that would be a reduction in 370%?
So our goal there is .35 milligrams per liter. Those reductions are based on the linked embayment model, which is the model that develops the, sets the nutrient goals. But what I'm, what I try to do is kind of stay away from getting really attached to the value specifically. We're really more interested in seeing values that are supportive of eelgrass. And the interannual variation is something that you're going to see based on differences in those weather patterns, whereas if you, if you've reduced your inputs, then you're going to be seeing a consistent decrease in that value. Okay, so for Maticet, so Maticet proper, the harbor of Maticet, the Sentinel Station for that area is located in Hither Creek. And Hither Creek has, this year in 2017, elevated concentrations over the six-year average and however, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we are seeing improvements in, in Hither Creek and Maticet over the historic values. Yet in 2017, we did see elevated values over the six-year averages. And I would attribute that to those differences in, in precipitation as well, because the Long Pond also did see declines in its wat, water nutrient-related water quality, and there is that connection between those two systems. So we are seeing an overall improvement in Hither Creek due to the improvements in Long Pond, but because that embayment is so enclosed, they did see, we did see a degraded conditions just last year, but I wouldn't expect that to, I would attribute that to that interannual variation and not something related to differences in input. So the harbor does have acceptable dissolved oxygen levels, however, Hither Creek did see periodic oxygen levels below the healthy threshold. And the algal biomass in the harbor was acceptable, however, in Hither Creek, June, July, and August were above the healthy threshold in terms of how much algae was present. And there were a couple of red tide species found over the course of the summer as well.
The, the June, July, and August in Hither Creek, is that, how much of that is temperature and weather, and how much of it is man-made? Do you have an idea on that?
Um, no.
Is that always the challenge here, trying to figure out where the ups and downs, what?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about the, some of the challenges and some of the work that we're doing to aid in those kind of predictive measures, just after I get through this one. And yeah, I'll, I'll address that a little bit. It's, just to comment on that, it is very difficult to, in terms of interannual variation, those differences that you see from year to year, those can be because of a specific event that you might know about, you know, septic system that has just failed and right on a water body, or it could be because the precipitation was nearly three times more, and that was a lot more input of, of nutrients into the system that drove that growth. So teasing that out was basically the point of those SRA's project models, to look at the land use and look at what the differences in land use are and how they've changed over time. This update is more to talk about kind of our trend and where we're going in terms of the concentrations and the measurements that we make. So in terms of Maticet, we, there are plans to rerun that model that looks at those inputs, which I'll talk about on the next slide.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get into the weeds there.
No, that's okay. It's a good question. Okay, so I apologize, I had some nice pictures on the, the other slide, the other presentation that I had sent after this one, so I apologize about just the words here. But in terms of management and moving forward, we are going to be surveying the eelgrass beds with side scan sonar. The Land Council is looking to do a couple of more near-shore testing of nutrients closer to eelgrass beds. I've been working with other island scientists to look at maybe doing aerial drone imagery during harmful algal blooms to kind of give everyone a, an idea of what that looks like and what the scope of that is when they are occurring. We are doing continuous dissolved oxygen measurements with SONs, which are devices that are remotely deployed and measure a number of water quality parameters, and then we retrieve them and get the data back. They're very useful in determining the critical levels of oxygen available for the fish and shellfish. We'll continue to track algae and bacteria and collaborate with the state agencies, so the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Division of Marine Fisheries to ensure swimmable and fishable waters and communicate that information to the public. And then the landfill nutrient contributions to Long Pond will be continued, those, the additional nutrient sampling will be continued. And the, the area of Maticet will also have a new linked embayment model rerun, which will consider the improvements that we're seeing in Long Pond, which affect Hither Creek.
Sorry, what's an embayment? What's a linked embayment, what does that mean?
Okay, it's just like the name of the model is called the linked embayment model. It basically attributes the fact that Long Pond is connected to Hither Creek and Maticet Harbor through the Maticet ditch. So it basically is just saying that they're not just looking at one section of an area, they're looking at the whole area and all of the contributions to each of those sections.
Thanks.
Yeah, we could maybe call it something else for our purposes.
Now I know.
And then we also, as part of our department, we like to do and enjoy doing outreach and education. So we go to homeowners groups and schools, and we participate in a number of programs to educate the public about water quality and, and habitat health. Oh, and it is not on this very boring slide, however, we also are working with MIT to, I'm, at the end of the month, I'll be seeing the initial, the initial basically product of a collaboration that we're doing with them to take all of these many, many samples and have a better, kind of a more streamlined way to look at those changes and variations. And that, they're hoping that our collaboration will actually help other towns with their water quality-related questions. So we'll be able to plug into different weather models and different other data sources, and then connect that to our individual samples that we take, which is going to be a really big benefit to us.
That's great.
Yeah, Matt, I have a question. Should we be, are we worried about anything other than nitrogen?
Yep.
And are we testing for other things? Yeah.
Yeah, so we're worried about the dissolved oxygen, so I've mentioned a couple of other things that we're testing for. There are a number of other concerns that people do have about, we, we are testing for phosphorus as well. I just talked about nitrogen because it's the driving force in the harbors. And we measure a number of other water quality parameters that I didn't bring up because, like, basic ones like pH and temperature and salinity and that sort of thing, but-
But do you know how much sort of like surfacins might be in there, or how much oil and things are getting in the harbor in the summertime? How many different types of cleaners are, is there a way to measure any of that stuff?
There are ways to measure that. We, we aren't measuring that currently, no.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I know the state is requiring us to work on nitrogen, but I would hate to do all this work and then find out, you know, 20 years from now, we should have also been looking at a couple other things, and they would have been relatively simple if we had tracked them and made best practice choices now. So that's why I'm just bringing it up now, so.
Yeah, I definitely think that all of our educational materials cover not just impacts to nutrients. We definitely cover what you should be doing with, how you should be washing cars, how you should, you know, where you should dispose of hazardous products, and trying to address all of those concerns. It's just that overarkingly, eutrophication, which is this degradation of water quality, is something that is basically happening worldwide and is known to be driven by nutrients. And so there are other concerns that we would have on a, on a, a specific basis, and just educating the public as to what they should be doing with those waste materials. And also that the storm drains drain directly to the harbor, so nothing should ever be put in a storm drain.
Like paint?
Anything, just rain.
I'm, I'm saying paint because we've had that issue in the storm drains and in the sewer system.
Yeah.
It's terrible for both. And I think, you know, if you're doing your outreach, one of the suggestions I'd have is to talk, you know, I'm sure you talk about paint, but I would highlight that because we're having particular trouble with it right now.
Yeah, it's one of those things where you think it's obvious that you shouldn't be dumping paint down a storm drain, but I agree that maybe underlining that is a good idea.
Yeah, we assume everybody knew enough to dump it down the toilet, but I guess that-
Also bad for the bacteria in the wastewater treatment facility and your septic system, so you would, you really want to get rid of chemicals properly.
And two, three years ago, I went around with you and put, you know, don't dump little kind of stickers on all the drains downtown.
Yep, and if any groups want to do, to do an activity like that, we still have more that, we still have more areas and, and redoing areas that might have lost some labels over time. So we'll still be doing that as well.
With the Girl Scouts on that.
Yeah. I just have two questions. One is, does any of this data change the way, change our management plan at all, or are we on track with the way we're currently managing?
With the best management practices and-
Are these results, are they, does, do any of the results make us feel as we need to change anything, or are we on the right track?
Sure, so I guess I'll take that question a little broader. Is, I think the easy answer to that question is yes. I think the ways we're starting to look at that is we're starting to use our data collection program to drive these things, like remapping eelgrass areas to do, we did one in Long Pond this last year, a bent and converted bridge study, to really see if we're starting to see restoration in the, the plants and animals that we expect to be there, returning to these systems. And if not, how can we still further improve those areas, whether it's, you know, a real local change to a specific input or broader changes, is really what's driving all of those things and why we take the data to make those decisions. And I think, you know, talking about Maticet specifically, I know it's been kind of a hot topic here, is looking at taking our data, updating the ways we've been making decisions, looking at those again and improving those, and also taking new techniques and other management tools that we didn't have when we originally started these and saying, what's the best path for us now? And I think that's where we are with a lot of these. And really what's exciting about all of these systems is we're starting to really talk about things like, can we do eel grant transplanting in areas, and is that really feasible to do because the system is in the condition to do it? You know, is, is that where we're heading? Probably yes. And I think really for us, when we talk about controlling inputs and the controllable load, really at the end of the day, you know, we talked a lot about weather variations, it would be nice to be able to maintain those systems within their restoration goals and be able to absorb year-to-year weather changes and still be meeting those. And I think, you know, anything that's tough from this is we have to still work and still do better to control those inputs so we can say, well, it was a bad year for rain, or it was a good year for rain, and we can say, well, we're still in systems that are restoring, regardless of weather and things that are out of our control. And I think that's hopefully where we're showing and starting to see systems rebuild and return that we would, we would hope to have there.
And that, actually Jeff, that, just more of a clarification, my other question was, when we're talking about increased precipitation causing those changes, that's, those increased nutrients are still coming from septic or lawns, they're still anthropogenic?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, is, is, it comes more in flushing, so those are still big inputs from, you know, fertilizer that may be on the surface, stormwater inputs that are on our roads, storm drains, roof shingles, all of the things that may not show up, all of the other components that, you know, we've started talking a lot about, whether it's surfactants or oils or plastics and microplastics and all of the things that we're seeing worldwide, is how can we best control even those getting in? And I think managing nutrients and doing a better job with, you know, just take stormwater as an example, doing a better job managing stormwater and treating that better, you get the added benefit of removing some of those other things in treatment that you may not be able to, to test for economically or really easily to do at a local level, but you can get that through better controls going in.
Thanks.
Questions, thoughts, wonders? Well, thank you Caitlin, thank you Jeff, thank you for the presentation. I just had one question, in the, in the slides, you had a picture of somebody holding up a dollar bill?
Oh, yeah.
They were scuba diving?
I don't know why that one wasn't there. Yeah, that was a five-dollar bill.
Wow.
That was what our interns found while doing- That was what our interns found while doing the waste data.
Okay. A couple of comments. Bill?
I wasn't sure if we were going to take any questions, so I just throw them out. Bill Greeter, in the aforementioned Madaket area. Just a couple of things to note. First, just concern, Rita, when you asked the question about reoccurring or continuing resources, and one thing that wasn't talked about in the list that you just said was the ever-present Nantucket landfill, not the Madaket landfill, but the Nantucket landfill. And so we're very interested in working with the town to try to help identify just how much that is an issue. We think it's underestimated and we certainly are trying to work with the town to get that, get a better understanding of that. I noticed on the continued outreach, one thing that baffles me is, to my knowledge, the town does not require boats using the anchorage to tablet their heads, to put the toilets in their heads. And so considering the number of mornings we have and the, and the folks that are coming and going, literally, into the harbor, right now, we are, we are requiring them to do that. And that'd be, that's obviously a real tremendous source of potential contaminant. And so I wonder why we as a community aren't just doing that as a matter of practice. And then it's-
I think Rita can respond to that.
I can respond to that. We were talking about that recently when we were having a small water quality work group and it came up, the issue or the possibility of using those tablets. And I think there was a general consensus that that would be something we'd look into, but what we know is that towns that do do that have more ability to enforce. So they actually oversee those tablets being put into each of the heads. Otherwise, if we just hand them out, there's no, we can't be certain that people will actually put them in. So what we have to look at is our ability to essentially increase the opportunity or ability to enforce, have more people that are actually there to physically put them into the heads.
So are there towns, a town official goes on board and puts them in?
Oh, Caitlin, yeah, Caitlin was there and she might have more answers. I'm not sure if it was a town official, but it, there were people, whether, I think in one case it might have even been a nonprofit or a volunteer group. No. Caitlin, you should answer.
Sure.
Yeah. It's, it's something that we're looking into. We just don't quite have the manpower to, to be able to implement it and enforce.
They tablet and seal them. They put a tablet in and they seal it.
And they know it's there.
To me, if we had to, if we as a community had to hire somebody to do that, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than having to put in a sewer system.
That's the point I was just about to make. That might be money well spent.
Yeah. And I think it's something that came up, it was just last week, so it is something that I do think we would look into. And Caitlin, you might have more information on the actual.
So I didn't really underline a lot about bacterial testing, but we regularly test for bacteria. And so if we were seeing really elevated bacterial levels in those areas with the high boats, we would probably be really concerned about that, about straight sewage entering the system. And although it is a concern, we have talked to Catalina Island and they have 10 additional people actually on boats, individual boats going around and making sure every time that a boat leaves the harbor and comes back, that they actually get a new tablet. And so that is, that is something that we, we have looked into and it would take a number more people, not just one other person. It would take many people, but it is an idea to look into because it would give an idea of whether people really are discharging and not using the pump out boat. But that bacteria is a really big indicator of raw sewage. So if we saw really high levels of that indicator bacteria, then that would probably be higher on our list, whereas septic systems don't, aren't meant to take care of nutrients, basically. So that bacteria will be taken care of. That's the point of a septic system is that it takes care of bacteria. It doesn't really reduce the nutrient load. So we're not getting, as, we might be seeing, you know, impacts and there's plenty of papers that talk about the impacts of septic systems sited very close to water bodies in sandy soil and their impacts to nutrients. They wouldn't be impacting the bacterial levels either. So I think that, that's something that the literature is pretty clear on, but if we do start to see high bacterial levels, I think that we should definitely think more about that.
So we do the testing now? We do, and what, and what kinds of results? Just relevant, relative terms?
Sure.
I said if it was a problem, but is it a problem? Is it way down and not a problem?
Yeah. So every time that you go to a beach that has a lifeguard, there'll be a sign, it's red and white, and it says water quality acceptable. You would know if you went to the beach and the sign said water quality unacceptable and that, that does not happen. We haven't had, I don't know. I mean, as long as I've been here, I haven't closed a beach, so Roberto would probably-
I was speaking to the discharge of, from the boats. And are you, you're not, you're not seeing, what I hear you saying is you're not seeing significant bacterial level change as a result of what may or may not be happening on the boat?
Yeah. It's very difficult to attribute it to a boat or not. I'm just relating the information that if it was raw sewage, then there would be bacteria present for sure and we would see that in our testing results.
What if it were gray water? Would gray water increase those?
Probably not. There might be some bacteria in gray water, but there's elevated bacteria in sewage.
In raw sewage, exactly.
Okay. We're going to move on.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Leslie, did you want to speak and then I'll go Bobby?
I understand this is a overview. I've, so first question is, the technical report that C, that the ME, that CMAS puts out every year, when will that be on the town website? I've looked for it. Did it just go on? Because I've been looking. Under natural resources. All right. I will look again.
Maybe we could send you the link.
Oh.
Even better.
It's a very, it's a, they're, they're great reports. So the, what you've got up here with the speedometer and the graph, I think it's a wonderful visual. Thank you for that. But I have a question, not being able to look at the technical report. Obviously, the graph shows the peaks for 2015, 2016, 2017. That's an average from something. Is it the average of one well, two, or station, one sentinel station, several stations? Is it an average of June through September or is it just August? What goes into, I assume it's an average and I just want to know what you have used to put, to make that average?
Maybe I should stay on this side. So yeah, like I said, there's 200, there's 235 samples, so obviously there's some averaging going on. We're doing the average from June to September. And so if you see something that says Sentinel as, on a figure that, for my update, that average is going to be for that one station, well, for where the, our management goal is set. So for the upper harbor, we actually added that site because it was removed. But, so that's an average of the two upper harbor sites. But I can, and then for other areas, so in Nantucket Harbor, basically in the original MEP report, which is also available there, there'll be a map of the stations and then if we're talking about one area, then I'll average the, the stations in that one and that kind of section. So maybe for next time, I could show a map and then show the different areas where those averages were taken. There is a lot, many samples that are taken and averaged that go into the, these figures. So when I email you, I can also maybe tell you what the, where the averages came from. And that, that data platform is going to be really, really useful in that because everything is going to be completely, you know, transparent. It's just, this is the average from this complete time set, but-
Is that the MIT collaboration you're talking about?
Yeah. The MIT collaboration, yep.
Great. Thank you.
So the comment about the boats caused a question. Okay, sewage has bacteria in it. Gray water, maybe, maybe not. But how about nutrients? Does sewage have nutrients in it and does gray water have nutrients in it? Because, okay, yes. So that's what's going into total nitrogen. Bacteria, not so much, but bacteria doesn't count towards total nitrogen, but sewage and gray water does.
I think I was relating more to the sewage pump outs because they're talking about the boats, the holding tanks. I related that to sewage.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's why I was giving that distinction.
Yes. I just, so boats can pollute via bacteria, but also nutrients.
Yes. That was-
Thank you. Bobby, did you have a question? Comment? I think we'll do one, one or two, okay, Cormac, then we have to, because this is just an overview, it's not getting into-
Just a couple of quick points. Jim, you asked about 15. 15 was extremely hot summer. That was part of it. Before I was on the select board, I, my first foray into town politics was two terms on SHAB back in the early, late, late eighties, early nineties. And at that time, we did actually tablet tanks. We stopped doing it when we got the pump out boat. And I think that, it's bad Sheila's not here, she could tell you, but I know that at one point, when I was on the board, we got an award for being the harbor that pumps the most amount of sewage on the East Coast. I can tell you firsthand from the marina, every slip has a pump out port behind it. Every two slips has one port. And there's a guy in the marina that does nothing but pump out boats 24/7. So I don't think that's as big an issue as fertilizers and some of the other things that we've, we're dealing with, we're dealing with now. As far as Madaket goes, one of the things that I pushed for my last year on the board was dredging the culverts in the ponds. I'm pleased to hear that Madaket's doing better, but I guarantee you, guarantee you, if you dredge those culverts and get some water flow in that pond, it will increase the quality, not only in the pond, but in, but in Hither Creek as well. I hope that that becomes a priority of the board again, because it wouldn't, I know the permitting might be difficult, but the cost is going to be not that much for the benefit. I, you know, you talk to all the old timers, you talk to Carl Sherrill and all these guys, they all say the same thing, that when those ditches were deep and the tide ran through them, that pond was in much better shape than it was now. And that's back when we had a dump, when they poured everything in the ground around that pond. So I hope that-
With no liner.
No liner. Oil, whatever. They just dumped it there. So, you know, that, their flow at that first bridge and that second bridge, first bridge especially, there's only about four inches of water that flows there. You stand there and you don't see hardly any movement of water. When the heron come into that pond, well, they don't come into that head of the pond anymore, but they used to come in there and you'd hold a net down to try to catch the heron. The tide flowed through that ditch so hard, you couldn't hold a net in place. So there's no flow from the upper head of Long Pond anymore out to the ocean. It needs to be, we need to change that.
Jeff, you have a comment on that?
I do, real quick.
Yeah.
So when we talk about rerunning the linked embayment model for the Madaket Harbor and Long Pond, one of the scenarios that we've specifically requested to be run is to help us with permitting a project if we decide to go that way, that specifically looks at what the effects of dredging, Madaket Ditch, the other culvert and Hither Creek would be, so we can look to see how that change in flow and what that depth may affect water quality. And having that in our hands as part of that run, if we decide to permit that, makes permitting much easier because that's a requirement of doing the permitting in that case. So hopefully we'll get good news from that and can undertake some of those options.
I need to, I need to just make sure that it's on the record about the pump outs because there's some misinformation, I think, that's out here. The harbor master does have a pump out boat. We do patrol the harbor. It'll be, you know, right before Memorial Day on through Labor Day. And the guys are out there in that boat all day long, looking at the boats or in the harbor, the anchoragees. And when they're keeping track of who's calling for pump outs, who's not, and if they, if there's a boat there that is apparently occupied and nobody's calling for a pump out, they're over there inspecting that boat. The other thing about di tabs is those that go in the holding tank, anybody, or generally anybody that's discharging into the harbor, doing it directly from the head into the harbor, bypassing the holding tank. There's no way a di tab would work. That's how they, they do that. They bypass their, their holding tank and, and pump it out. Gray water and boats prior to 1990s, built in the nineties, didn't have to go into, by Coast Guard standards, didn't have to put their gray water in a holding tank. So some of that discharge is directly over in those older boats, but that'd be an impossible task to try to police that. But di tablets, we do give to special events, Fugawi, the race, the race week, all them, they do get them, but it would, it wouldn't be money worth spent to give them to every, to try to stop every boat coming into harbor and doing that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Cormac, calling Nantucket Land Council. I don't know if everybody noticed, you guys probably didn't, but maybe you saw it out these side windows. It was kind of ironic while Caitlin was talking, Ryan Conway came over with a lawnmower and then he came over and fertilized the property, the town property. Please, I encourage you guys, you got to lead by example. First and foremost, there's no need to fertilize these properties here. It's town owned property. You really don't need to fertilize this grass. You can also change the grasses and, and actually have some native plants. Secondly, if I asked any town member what he's putting on the property, I don't think I could get an answer right now, because I've, I've asked for this quite some time to try and get, get an understanding of what the town is putting on their own properties. I know that they're now going to be working with Tom Hanlon and Tom Hanlon has been good in the past. I think that's who has the contract now for all the town properties, so I am pleased to see that. But again, please, the irony is amazing here. Lead by example. Thank you.
Hey, Cormac? Anyone else? Board members? Libby?
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Caitlin and Jeff. I really liked the speedometer. I think it's a great addition. All right, moving on to selecting these reports. Review scheduled fall 2018 special town meeting. Discussion of potential warrant articles continued from our last meeting. Retail marijuana sales, Old South Road corridor improvements, harbor press funding and zoning. Where would you like the, Libby, do you want to start us off?
Sure. At your last meeting last week, we were talking about some potential dates and some potential articles. And with regard to the dates, you asked that we go back and think about some other midweek dates. So I, and see, you know, make sure that they'd work. So it looks like Wednesday, October 10th could, would, would work. We talked also internally about the 17th and the 24th. The 10th, I guess, seems preferable or least problematic, I guess I would say. It is a Wednesday, which is sort of new, but there doesn't seem to be any particular reason not to have it on a Wednesday, other than you won't be able to have a meeting then.
So do you want a motion to do that or is it?
Well, let, let me just tell you a little bit more and then-
Okay.
Maybe. So this is going to mean a little bit of an earlier timeline and I revised the key timing considerations a little bit. And I, what I would do next is when you pick the date, give you a timeline in the next week or two, so we can see really what we're getting at with when articles and warrants and review and all that needs to happen. So I think that the warrant is going to need to be adopted more like early August rather than mid-August. And we're going to need to be scheduling a lot of reviews for things subsequent to that in August and September with all the usual groups that need to review things. So hopefully their availability will be, will, you know, work out. So I guess, yes, if you are all good with the 10th, you could- So do it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So another few things here. The potential warrant articles that we've been talking about are marijuana- about are marijuana bylaws, zoning or general, something possibly maybe to do with Harbor Place, the Old South Road corridor improvement projects, the Airbnb tax, which I don't think I have any information on tonight, because I don't think the legislative action has been completed yet. Last week, you talked a bit about a feasibility study for the senior center slash community center, but I think what, what we also, you also talked about was let's only really put articles on here that were critical and other things like that should go through the regular process. So last week, we, with regard to the marijuana, marijuana bylaws, we, you all talked about seeing what groups out there, Board of Health, School Committee, Behavioral Health Task Force, ASAP, groups like that, what, if they have a position or not. And I've been forwarding you the emails as they've come back in. So some of those groups are going to be coming into you next week and the week after to discuss their position. And we talked about forums, so we've worked with, we may have mentioned this last week, but we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce and 97.7 WAK about a forum that they would sponsor. And they, I believe, have settled on Monday, June 4th at the Nantucket Inn for a public forum. And you, whoever, you all and myself are more than welcome to attend, but I think it would be geared towards public input. And we've talked about our own forum that's more of an informational session. Do people have questions about the law and what we can and can't do? And we're working on scheduling that for Monday, May 21st. And I don't think we have a location yet, but we are, Athanam?
We are.
Oh, yes, the LGI at the school is where we're talking about having that. And we would have Katie Loughman from Town Council's office there to, you know, give the usual overview, maybe a little bit more of an overview, not so specific, and really hope people will come to ask questions about it. I also ask Director of Planning to come tonight and if you had any questions to review with you, maybe if you wish, the current zoning situation, which you may probably already are familiar with, but there may be some other, I just didn't know, Andrew, if Planning Board had talked at all about any potential bylaw changes that they might be thinking of recommending with regard to the moratorium. And then I think you all were going to maybe have some continued discussion about this.
Hello, Board. Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's a lot of activity, which I think you all knew we were going to be here at this point. The Planning Board is going to discuss their particular direction that they would like to see at their meeting on Monday. I have looked at some other bylaws. Libby asked me to sort of see what some other places are doing. There is, in terms of zoning, there has been, I think it came up, if you remember, at town meeting, including hemp, because hemp is similar to, to marijuana, and so that has been sort of folded in to the definitions. There's a new concept called the Craft Marijuana Cooperative that has to be put in to the bylaw. There is what's called a social consumption retailer, and this is about whether it's a principal onsite consumption or would be allowed as an accessory to like, I mean, I think you heard this at town meeting, something like, you know, connected to, with yoga or some other health type thing. Whether or not you're going to allow that or not is something to think about. Some communities do, some communities do not.
Was, was that included in the, what we would have to opt into as a community? Does that fall under like the same provision as the cafe?
It is, and communities are putting it in their bylaw if either to specifically say it's not allowed or to allow it in certain locations only. Ahead of that, basically, so if that actually happens or something changes.
Or they change the law.
Right. So it's, it's covered.
Yep. I think you remember, there was a discussion a little bit at town meeting, I mean, our current bylaw says that it has to be a standalone facility, cannot be co-located. Since that time, the fire, I think it's the federal fire entity has issued a recommendation that it not be located with residential uses and other uses that might be sensitive. So I think we'd probably stick with that unless you, unless somebody thinks it could co-locate with other commercial businesses. It seems to me that so far, I think the concern was there aren't enough locations, but at least two have found standalone locations, so I don't know that we really need to vary from that. I do think that you're going to need to include licensing, which would be a general bylaw amendment. Most other communities are doing that. Now, there's some, the Attorney General's Office has not made a commitment that they're going to allow that yet, but other communities, Brookline and North Hampton have moved forward with licensing bylaws anyway. So we may know something more between now and the town meeting, but I think that's something we should consider.
So, so what would that entail exactly?
So licensing is, is putting similar language into the bylaw about, similar to things like alcohol and smoking. So, you know, you, where are you going to allow this? In vehicles, on town property, in schools, you know, generally you're amending your bylaw to not allow that.
For the personal use or for the sell, set, the retail of it?
It, it depends. Other communities have, have, have made different, you know, allowances for that, like to not allow like an open container, you, you know, you can't have an open container of alcohol in your car. Are you going to allow marijuana use while driving? Don't know.
On the beaches?
So we would have to.
I think you have to start thinking about that, right? Those kind of things would go into a bylaw. Size requirements, there's some waste disposal that's included in other communities' bylaws. You know, some general nuisance language. Also, there was some, in at least a couple of the bylaws, and this is, was based on Denver's, I mean Colorado's experiences, that certain methods of extraction are specifically not allowed because there's been some explosions and other things where people have extracted oils and other things, and those might need to go into a bylaw as prohibited. So we have a little work to do here.
Yeah, that's interesting. I was, I think all that was kind of obvious, that you can't use it on the beaches and that.
It's not obvious unless you make it obvious.
Right.
And they extract it either by under real high pressure or they use like butane. They use some stuff that's really nasty to get the, the drug out of it. So, or you can use, really put it under hydraulic pressure and extract it as well, so.
Right.
One is better, it's a better product if you believe in it, and it's, you know, better than butane, basically.
Right. And all the things that you were kind of listing off under the licensing, does that come from Planning Board? Does that come from us? Is it, how does that work process wise for special town meeting?
Well, I think we would be probably working together in a, certainly the zoning bylaw information would be developed through Planning. I think that, you know, for consistency, we would probably, you know, certainly work with probably Public Safety, Board of Health to come up with those licensing. We have some examples from, Brookline is, is one of the most comprehensive ones, so.
I think, I think we'd probably want that, but also I think what might be helpful is, and maybe Town Council's office is working on this, I can double check, kind of a list of the items that we, that we want to decide on in a bylaw. Do you, do you have anything like that? Like, like these things that you've talked about, personal use, for example, and where that can and can't happen and that sort of thing, do you?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, this is, this was a fairly quick review from the past three days, so.
I think Katie should, Katie should be able to find, get that for us pretty quickly.
Yep.
And Katie talked about a few, few different things between, differentiating between zoning bylaws and general bylaws and where we could put.
I guess that was my question, how's that, what goes where and?
Right, there, and, and there is at least an open question from what I read, again, that whether the Attorney General will honor the local licensing. So I think, you know, right now, we need to put as much as we can in the zoning bylaw, but I think other communities are moving forward licensing. So we may have an answer by the time we get to our town meeting.
And last time, we talked a little bit about how they're not allowing delivery yet, but if that changes, we probably want to anticipate how we want to handle it.
Right, and that's, that's part of the definitions that are, that have been added into, that we don't have in our current bylaw.
Andrew, do you know what sort of waste disposal requirements or what are some of the concerns with that?
I think it's, you know, again, will seeds and other things sort of, you know, are they properly destroyed or do they end up growing on your landfill? I mean, so there's, again, there's sort of standards that, that get developed on that. The community, I mean, the community that adopted that talked about, you know, that there's a plan for waste disposal that's developed.
I didn't think about the seeds.
I know.
You don't have to cap the landfill anymore. Spread some seeds.
Right.
Thank you, Andrew, that was, that was really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll have more for you, you know, shortly, once the Planning Board gets to talk about this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thinking, thinking about this, one of my, you know, this is, this is still a lot of work that this entails. I would love us to open and close the special town meeting as quick as possible, so the things that we have to do, we actually have time to do them. You know, I don't want to be in a situation with 15 or 20 more articles, some of them that which need, you know, reams of work that the staff, that it's summertime and the staff doesn't have willingness or time to deal with. So I, you know, I think we should keep this at, you know, open and close as quickly as possible, focus on the things you really need to do and push everything else into the spring, but that's.
I think we kind of already started doing that with like, you know, senior center, the feasibility thing came up last time and you mentioned that, we all kind of brought us back.
But if we open this for two weeks, we're going to get two weeks' worth of stuff. If we're allowed to open and close it in a night, you know, and just put in the things we need to put in, I'd be in favor of that.
Second.
Any other conversations on?
So we're, we're working on getting this stuff, so I'll talk to Andrew about, he already, oh, sorry.
It's right there.
I'll talk to you about when to come back and maybe we can combine that with the school and Behavioral Health Task Force and Board of Health are coming back sometime soon too. I don't, just can't remember exactly what dates, so maybe we'll just coordinate that. I think that was it about.
Yeah, my only other comment is we've got, I think, two letters of non-opposition out. There were one support and one non-opposition and another person looking. I think we need to clarify what the, the first letter to Mass Meddy, what does that, they don't have a location, I don't think currently, so I think we should, you know, I think the town should send a letter to the Department of Public Health and tell them they don't control a location and ask what do we have to do?
I thought, I thought we asked Katie, that my recollection is Katie said that they can, you know, how to just, when they find a location, then it moves forward.
Yeah, they haven't come back.
They haven't, but I think we should find, she's telling us that, but my, what I'm saying is let's, we should be proactive and, and I think saying they don't have a location, you know, because, because we've got three. You know, I think, as much as I think we should, you know, have just medical, my guess is that we're gonna, you know, the board is gonna end up supporting two, but we've got three people lined up for it right now. And so I just kind of think it should be an even playing field, someone shouldn't hold it for three years and then, you know, and then, and then we do something and then they sell it and we've got, you know, so I just think we need to be smart about how we do it and we should be asking Public Health, you know, do they still honor that? You know, if they don't control a location, do they still honor it? Or would the fact they don't control it invalidate the previous letter we've sent? And then when they get a location, they can come back to us. I mean, I think we should be thinking along those lines, not just hoping it'll, you know, sort itself out. We should be proactive and try to sort it out.
I think I may not be remembering correctly, but I do think Katie Loughman did answer that, saying that even though they don't have a location, that there, it's still valid, which I agree with you. I think once you're, there should be a timeframe and if you don't act within that timeframe, it's not an indefinite letter of non-opposition, but I think as it stands right now, it is.
But that doesn't mean we couldn't do what you said.
No, we should do what we said because we, you know, she said it's not really clear and it probably means they can do this, but if we go to DPH and say gee whiz, guys, you know, gee whiz, they have, they haven't controlled it for two years, you know, we, you know, we would like to, you know, know how you're going to handle this.
So, so we could ask Town Council to draft some letter to whoever's appropriate to say we want to limit the number of letters of non-opposition or whatever to two. Is that what you're?
Well, we may want to, and if we, if we've already got three in the pipeline, then we're, you know, they're one over. So I'm asking, I want some clarification on whether, you know, Mass Meddy is, you know, so I'd like a letter clarifying.
I think we, so Katie did weigh in on this, but it was four or five months ago. A lot of things have changed and Mass Meddy's fall has been bought and sold, so what, so we don't know, I'd like to have Katie weigh in, back in on this and review it and give us.
And what, and what options do we have to clarify the situation?
Yes.
So that we, you know, to be fair to the other people that are lined up to.
Yeah, it may be a question that hasn't been asked, this is all new legislation. I mean, not to, to council, Katie's done a good job trying to answer it, but to DPH and.
And the other issue is if they do go away or they have to at least get another letter, let's say Town Meeting does say we want to put a moratorium on this. We don't have someone sitting there who's grandfathered, and I don't think Town, Town Meeting will, but you know, right now, we're in a situation where, you know, we have a recreational person and they're waiting for, you know, for the, for this to happen, so anyway.
Right, so we'll get Katie to weigh in on that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I feel like she answered this more recently, but I can't get anything on her, so.
Yeah, we, I'm on the time shots, yeah.
But maybe there is a more proactive way or another way to address it.
She said basically that they don't expire.
Right.
But, and that we can't rescind it, but maybe no one's really pressed the question because in most permitting processes, there's some kind of a sunset date on a special permit, on a building permit, those kind of things. You have to act in certain steps to move it forward.
That'd be the kind of thing to put in that letter when we, before we, because those are.
In hindsight.
What, a date? Put in, what, put, what in the letter?
Like that you have to move forward with actually putting in the facility by a certain time.
Yeah, but that's, I think, somewhat beyond our control. That is completely state regulated. That doesn't necessarily mean we can't send a letter saying we'd like to rescind or retract or whatever, so we'll, we'll talk to her about that.
Okay.
Anything else at this point about?
Marijuana for now?
Okay. So some of the other potential warrant articles, the Old South Road corridor projects, you talked last week about prioritizing maybe the top one or two and seeing if there's a recommendation from Planning about what those might be. And depending on where that ends up, we'll, just to review, we'd need a capital appropriation and somehow that's going to have to get through the, the process as probably expedited or outside of the normal process, because we won't be there yet. And in all likelihood, we're going to need a debt exclusion, which will need to happen at either a special election or it's, it's possible we can tack it on to the November election, but we will have to notify the Attorney General's Office or maybe the Secretary of State by August 1st in order to do that. And just logistically thinking it through, we were discussing this a little earlier today, if any of the marijuana stuff that we're going to be putting forward requires a ballot vote, that can't go on the November ballot. So we would then probably be able to put the debt exclusion on a different special election. So it's just, there's a lot of balls in the air on that right now, but I'm just pointing out that we're going to probably need a special election if we're going to have a debt exclusion. So I, I don't know if you and Mike had recommendations on specific Old South Road corridor projects to put forward.
I mean, I think what we're trying to do is get something accomplished, and I think it's as much of a political conversation about what we think might get passed, right? I mean, so.
It's part of it, yeah.
Is it stripping out the milestone projects? Is it, I mean, or do we go back in for, and say this is so important, we want it all? You know, we feel strongly about it that way, so, I mean, it's great, I'm looking forward to hearing what Planning's saying, but I think we also have to figure out ourselves about what might pass.
Mike? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm happy to recommend the same portfolio of projects that we move forward with a more robust, a better production value in the rollout and the presentation to the public so that there's an understanding of actually what these projects are, what we're addressing, that kind of thing. The Planning Commission has not discussed this, we'll, we'll discuss this at our meeting on May 21st, Monday, about perhaps. The Planning Commission has not discussed this. We'll discuss this at our meeting on May 21st, Monday, about perhaps a recommendation. Again, although I still recommend the same portfolio of projects, if there are one of these intersections that are currently not failing, that would be the Pulpus and Milestone Road intersection, that's a candidate project that you could remove. The other intersections are all failing. The Nobodyer Farm Road intersection has a failing level of service. It's also a high crash location. So that would be concerning to remove those. And the balance of the other projects are mostly bike, pedestrian and transit improvements. So it would, I'd be hesitant to remove any of those improvements. The priority area that we initially talked about during the, the financial review during the capital process was from the Milestone Rotary to Amelia Drive. That, that's what we would pace ourselves to work on first as far as scoping and design strategies. But, but they're all very important. And that, that said, if I was going to use some kind of criteria for removing a project, I would maybe remove the, the one intersection that is currently not having a level of service of failure, that being the Pulpus. That would be, that's about a $3 million project. So that would remove that amount of funding. That said, I still recommend the whole portfolio with better production value before a special town meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, and I mean, recognize that it did pass town meeting. It was the ballot that it didn't pass.
How much, how many votes did it fail? Do you know? 200?
It wasn't a few.
I know, the police station, it was 50 votes. It passed by 50 and this, this lost by a couple hundred, I think.
Yeah, just my read of the data. There was about 200 votes that voted for the balance of the capital projects of the ballot that did not vote for this. And there are a few different reasons why, but not knowing what the projects were and the high dollar value were, were two of those three reasons.
Sorry, Mike. Do you feel there was a bit of discussion at town meeting about lack of clear drawings? Do you feel like you're, those will be ready when they're assembled and so we'll be able to get those out to people so they can be understood?
Absolutely. We did have workshops through this past summer, a number of different opportunities. We, you know, had a website dedicated to the project. Obviously, not everybody can keep up with everything that's going on at town government. And frankly and honestly, nobody, you know, it's not the most exciting program to sit through when you present these. But there were a few residents along Old South Road that did participate in those, those workshops and outreach. Production value is good. Photo simulations that definitely could be, you know, demonstrate visually the operations of some of these improvements, especially the medians and how they control those turning movements. That's really important for the driveways that are along Old South Road to make those turning maneuvers, to make a left-hand turn to get out. It's just very difficult. You all know this. But photo simulations may help. That's, that's what I mean by production value in outreach. It always helps to use social media to push a lot of this out. We tried to use some of our own. Obviously, it wasn't enough. So any way we can do TV, radio, social media, that's what I mean by production value increase. But I still like the same portfolio of projects because they're all very important improvements. Thanks.
The one suggestion, I had this earlier to Mike today, is one of the questions I heard after is why are we moving everyone quicker on these roads when they're just going to back up, you know, at five corners on Washington Street and everywhere else? You know, what's the point of spending 14 million when we're just going to be backed up? And, you know, he, his explanation is this is going to help those areas. So I suggest that we have some, you know, some sort of computer program, you know, computerized program, have someone look at this and prove that. There's guys that do this. They did it 25 years ago when they did, we did the comp plan. And I just think that would take away, 5% or 10% of the people were probably against it for that reason that I talked to. So that's, that might be enough to win this. So.
I was just going to say that, I mean, that concern is also on an assumption that everyone's going to town where it's dispersing people to Surfside, to Skonset and so forth in a quicker manner. I mean, that could be valid, but I just don't.
Yeah, but even if you're going to Cisco, even if you're going to Cisco, you're going to get through the Mid-Island somehow. You've got to come through these areas to go to that area. So it's kind of, and there are backups in the summertime. All the way down Old South and all the way down Fairgrounds and all the way into town on a rainy day, you're backed up on both roads all the way to town.
And perception's reality.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to, we have to deal with it, whether we.
I think people have forgotten how different it was before the circle went by the stoppage, by the fire station.
After a summer of spending your summer on Old South Road, maybe in October, they'll vote for these improvements.
Well, I wonder if we should try to obviously bring everything back, but maybe bring it back into, in a couple of pieces. Maybe bring something to the special and something to the annual, if there's a way to group them. Just a suggestion.
If we were to group and, you know, a planning transition could talk about the pluses and benefits, disadvantages of that. I think Milestone to Amelia would be my, is the highest priority. I think Fairgrounds and Old South should have been done, and the Milestone Rotary should have been done five years ago. We're, we're, we're behind. So from Milestone to Amelia, I think that's, that's the minimum that we would do. And then anything on top of that, I think is more of like maybe a political discussion on amount, what is it, how's the public view that? Again, I'm all for it. And I, I was in those meetings and I think it's really exciting. They're not boring.
No, it is very exciting. Andrew did a good job.
Yeah.
That makes sense from sort of my own use of Old South. I definitely see, you know, Fairgrounds, that stretch backed up the most. I think the Nobodyer Farm Road one is an interesting one though, with it being, I can see how, I haven't seen one, but I can see how that would be a high crash zone or area. So I don't know if that's one as well that makes sense, but I, I would look to Mike to say, like, if we do these piecemeal, does that make sense? Or are we then, are we really backing things up elsewhere if we just look at that section? To me, that's a section that makes sense, but I don't know what that means from a practicality point.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, just to move it, try to see if we can reach some consensus. So I think Milestone Rotary to Amelia, to me personally, is the highest priority.
Let's say this all went through this fall, all of it, and we got it all through. It would be kind of phased out anyway, correct? So if we think Milestone to Amelia, that makes sense for people visually, it's smaller, they could vote, you know, they can, a high chance of that being voted through at the ballot appropriation wise. And then at the annual town meeting, maybe go for Nobodyer Farm Road or if it's going to be phased anyway. I don't know, it's just a, that's a strategy. And, you know, what do you guys think?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of, if we're going to do it, if we're going to spend the time to do the public outreach and we're going to, you know, prove to people that it's going to help and we're going to do our homework, then I don't have a problem bringing it all back. I'm in favor of it because it's, because of the pedestrian and the bike things are really important. And so I think, I don't think that was sold strong enough to people. And I think if we as a board get behind it, I think there's, you know, and if the outreach is done, I think fall is the perfect time to be having this discussion. As long as there's not a lot of other big ticket items this fall, you know, if this is it, I think it's got a shot.
Do you think, Matt, I mean, given all the noise that's going on in the summer and the activity, do you think will, will the voice of what we're trying to communicate be something people will listen to or recognize?
I think it might be. I mean, there's, you know, the town association has their largest meetings in the summer. Some of the people are voters, some aren't, but there's, there's a fair amount of things to attend, but.
The bulk of it's going to be September and October. Well, sorry, September, October 10th.
August and September, yeah.
And it'll be after Labor Day. I mean, it won't be, you know, so it's, it's three weeks.
If we did bring everything back, should we split it into more than one article? Because, for the people who may be against just a portion of the project.
Again, that's, it was one town meeting and, and lost at the ballot. So would someone vote for one, at the ballot, vote for one versus another? They might vote no on one. I mean, I don't know.
They, well, I mean, I heard some concerns about like the one at the end of Nobodyer Farm Road particularly. And someone just might write, vote against the whole thing because they don't understand that, that one and have an issue with that. So that's just for an example.
If you don't drive through Nobodyer Farm Road at 7:30, it doesn't seem like it's a high value. But I do it almost every morning. I'm aware of it, but it's, if you're not paying attention, the traffic is stopping really fast.
Yeah, and I mean, people really need to, the outreach is really important to, for people to understand the safety because there's a lot of concerns that it's going to be more dangerous for pedestrians and they need, there, an education needs to happen on that because.
That, and I heard a lot of conversation about the visuals and people being very concerned. I think any kind of visuals, 3D, anything like that that could help people visualize it because they, there are a lot of concerns about it looking like a highway on the mainland. And I know that's not what it's going to look like, but without the visuals to really show people that, I think there's just a lot of fear.
Oh, and like, like with the medians.
Yeah, exactly. The medians and, you know, what was this going to look like? So I think that some of the sections, I think you could win just based on logic and people's use. But I think if we're going back with the whole thing, then we'd have to be confident that we have the visuals to tell the story about what it's going to look like.
It's not a bad idea to go, to go for the whole thing. I think when, when you look at putting a sidewalk on the south side of, or some kind of bigger eight-foot sidewalk on the south side of Old South Road. Mike and I had a conversation the other day and I said, there's no room for that. Doesn't Fasaro's just butt right up to the Old South Road? I just, I couldn't visualize it, but, but then I went and drove it. It's like, oh, it connects all these businesses from Young's Way to Amelia Drive, right?
I'm trying to find some consensus with the board. So we want to go, I'll throw something out. We'll go for the whole thing, but we put it in two different articles so that when it goes to the ballot, well, does it, it goes as a separate vote to the ballot then, if it goes on two separate articles?
The ballot question would be however you want it to be. It could be one, it could be two, it could be.
And do we have to have it in two separate articles to have two separate items on the ballot?
No.
Okay, all right. So we could have done that this time. Okay, theoretically, okay.
You're saying we could have separated it up at the ballot if we wanted to?
Yeah. I think that, was that what you're saying? Separate it up the ballot?
I mean, I was assuming separated at both so that the crossover is more understood.
Yep.
But I didn't, I actually didn't realize that you could
Right, yeah.
do it as one at town meeting and then separate it out on the ballot.
I didn't need that, that's why I asked.
And do we need to sign this now?
Might as well.
Well, do we want to get a recommendation from the NPNEDC after their meeting?
Wasn't, are they going to give us? That's the 21st, so.
Mike, are you saying that that is the recommendation?
No, I'm not saying that's the recommendation. I'm, it's your pleasure of what you want to do. I, I don't think that there's going to be that much of a difference of a discussion at that forum than this forum here. And so I, if you, if you want to go for the whole thing and separate it out, I think probably worst case scenario, they pick the option that, or it's probably the least priority. I think that's a, that's a, you know, think about that as like a real ramification. But, you know, we've discussed removing a project or two, perhaps. And again, I like the whole portfolio. So if, I guess the point is, you don't necessarily need to wait for a planning commission because I don't, really don't think they're going to different, have a different point of view than you.
Right, right. So, I mean, I don't want to make the motion, but I like the, everything except pulling out the Pulpus and Milestone.
And doing it as one or doing it as a couple?
So, kind of what Matt said, go for it all, explain it well.
So I'll make, I'll throw this out. I'll make a motion that we put the entire, the same project on the, on the warrant. And we, but we put it in two different articles, one for the Milestone to Nobodyer, to Amelia, and then second one for the rest of them.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second for discussion. My, my question is just thinking through, if it doesn't pass, then where are we at? If it doesn't, if it fails at the ballot box again, where are we at? Then are we looking at trying to break it down further at another town meeting?
I don't know. I think we'd have to wait and see what, we're not going to lose. You know, we're not going to go in with it. We're going to win.
I like that attitude, Jim.
Can I be clear on what you're saying? So this list that's projected here, you're saying put everything with the exception of, what is that, item number three? Old South Road reconstruction, Rotary to Amelia Drive, and make that a separate item? Is that what you're saying?
No, Milestone Road at Pulpus, I think was the one, wasn't it? You were talking about stripping out.
Yeah.
It's about $3 million. It's.
Just to be clear, Libby, I would say the first four items.
One, two, three and four would be Milestone to Amelia.
The balance of that list would be, I think that's what I heard Jim say if I'm correct.
So, yeah, it would be one through four, right?
Correct.
So the first four are in one article?
I believe that's what.
Yes, and then Milestone Road at Nobodyer and Monomoy and Pulpus is.
So that's five, is that five through 11?
Yeah, I, I'm not exactly sure. So I'm just, you know.
I'm just trying to go by them out here.
See, and I'm not so sure we want to do that because, you know, the bike path and the pull-offs on Amelia and stuff are very important. So, you know, I wouldn't want to have them a lower priority and have them voted down just to save, you know, so I kind of like them all together for that reason.
Okay. All right, well, I'm just trying to move.
Notes get along, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That you just take the three miles, so Milestone at Nobodyer Farm, Milestone at Monomoy and Milestone at Pulpus and put them in the separate article and put the rest all together?
That was what my, that's what I thought my motion said.
I like, I like that.
And I, to me, these other things at the bottom were included with the Old South Road. Because they said Old South Road.
Five, six and seven would be separate. Everything else would be together. Would you want to amend your motion to that, Jim?
That was my motion. Everything, I mean, you know, if you want.
Is that, are you saying for the, is this motion for the voting at town meeting or is this motion for the ballot?
I made it, I made it for town meeting because Dawn suggested that it would be better for.
You think what, Dawn?
That they should be the same, that what people vote on at town meeting should be the same. It should look the same on the ballot.
Is it okay if I just can kind of repeat the motion? Do you have it, Craig, written down?
Yeah, I think so.
So I'm just going to go over it again. So we're going to put everything together. In two, so it's going to be two separate articles. One will be Milestone Road, Nobodyer Farm Road, Monomoy and Pulpus. Those three will be one article, one ballot. Everything else will be another article and another ballot. That's the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So there was a second. For Rita? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I want them together.
Okay. And if there is any, if there was further discussion down the road, could we, if something does come up, like, hey, it is better to put them all together, can we change it or is that?
No, you guys can change it.
We can change it up until we set the warrant.
Yeah, you can change it until the last minute, right?
Just if there's more information, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you, Jim, for pushing forward.
Yeah.
Is there any, we're good on that Harbor Place? Do you want to talk about that for a special town meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're relatively close on defining the intermodal center and what it would, somewhat what it would look like and what it would include. And then if we can put a number to it, it may be worth seeing if the town wants to do it.
And a number estimate will be coming shortly.
They gave us some estimates, but I think we've got to get a little bit more clarity. This is my, my opinion, that we need a little more clarity on the design, on the design and what sort of level we're going to bring it to in terms of materials and so forth to fit into the old historic district, which could increase the cost.
Any, any thoughts there?
I think this is going to be a really tough vote, no matter how we, you know, let's say the numbers are great, the pictures are great and everything else. I think this is going to be a very, very divisive, difficult vote. And I'm not, you know, I'm not so sure we have the bandwidth to get the public behind it this summer. Maybe we do, but.
Bandwidth or the time?
Both, you know, time, you know, we've got a lot going on. So I'm just not so sure. But, you know.
So you received the, an update from me that was, showed the work of the work group and showed the timeline with an expected draft report to this board at the end of July. And how that dovetails into, because we're going to need at least that time. I mean, I think we're going to be close perhaps even to the next session on design and exterior circulation. But we'll have then, you know, lots of issues on governance where this is. Where this is, where this sits, is this a town department? Is it part of an RTA? Uh, that will drive a lot of conversations about the way we're gonna finance it. Uh, what will the boards be? That's even before we get into kind of any financial modeling, uh, because we have to decide where, where it sits organizationally. Uh, we have to decide what the financing is. And then we'll go through, and then we'll do, uh, and all this has to be done with town, the fin, town finance department and bond council and others. Um, and then we'll find out what the finance, well, you know, I would think we would need to know what the operating budget is before, I would want to know the operating budget of, of the entity before we went to town meeting. I think, so it's, it's up to you, but that's, that's a, that's a, um, you know, that's a high bar.
Yeah, just based on, um, the thought of trying to keep this simple and the amount of time that we have, everything you listed off sounds very daunting to try and have finished and clear, and not being, feeling the pressure to rush towards a zoning change by special town meeting.
I actually wasn't suggesting the zoning change. I was suggesting that whether the community will support the actual intermodal facility project. And I am concerned that we did make, make some commitment to the people offering this opportunity to us to bring something forward in the fall. And, um, and that this could end up being a missed opportunity. You know, we're being offered something by a private entity, and I'd like to see if the voters support the concept. I don't know exactly what that looks like in terms of the article. I mean, I think we could put a dollar figure to it, but.
And without knowing all the things I just mentioned, I couldn't support an article. Um, and I, and I don't think we made a commitment. I personally don't think I made a commitment to the, to the owners that we would have something on, uh, on a special town meeting of any kind. Uh, but that's all, obviously, everybody's perception, so.
Yeah, and I think, and that's gonna be the other part of this. If the, if the public links these, you know, and, and they, if they link them one way or the other, it could, it could not, it could have, it could backfire. So I think we have to have as much answered as possible before we bring it. God, my voice is terrible tonight.
I was allergies?
I don't know, I don't think so. Maybe I'm getting old.
Something natural juice. I think we defer it. Okay. So we'll bring this back and can you?
I'm saying, we don't, we don't put it on the special town meeting. That's my recommendation.
I'm concerned that we've done all this work and it's gonna be a missed opportunity. And we're just gonna keep doing more work and we're, we, I think we at least need some sense of the community, whether it's a sense of the meeting type of question, on whether they support this type of facility. Because we're, we're, we're spending money and spending time and I don't, I, I just, I, I need a sense of whether the community wants to move or in some way.
Until we do that work, I can't tell them what it is, because it's not just the building and what the outside looks like. It's who's gonna own it, operate it, and the impact on the, on the taxpayers. And I, and, and so if I were tax, if I were, that's, that's information I would want to know. So I, I, I recommend as the chairman of that group, that we not put it on the, uh, special town election, town meeting. I would make that as a motion to this board now.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion. I just, I, I, Donna, I feel like it goes both ways, where I think that we need to have as much information as possible, but I feel like if we don't have that information, then it would fairly easily get shut down and maybe do more harm than good at a special town meeting.
I think we need to try and get the information.
Is there any other way to get a sense without town meeting? Or do you feel that's the best way to do it? I don't know.
We could do surveys.
Yeah, a survey could be creative.
Go to community groups. I mean, part of the, part of the outreach, I would hope, when we do take it to a town meeting, would be meeting with various consumer, various groups, you know, um, the various civic associations. I mean, I would think we would have to do an all, all court press to communicate the value of this to the community.
The tricky part is until you have your operational and can explain who's gonna use it, how you're gonna charge for parking on street, how's this gonna interact, people may support it, and they're gonna think that the rich people will pay for it and park in it, and they'll park next to their desk all day. And it won't work that way. You know, everyone's gonna think about it themselves. They're gonna think, this is here for me when I want to bring my kids to hockey on the weekends. You know, this will be here for me, however. But we don't know what it's really, how it's really gonna work yet. And once we know how it works, then we can answer the questions honestly and, you know, but until we have that, I think it's very difficult.
So we do know, like, we, I just learned, not, I don't know if it's a good or a bad thing, that the utilization of the parking garage will be about 40%. Well, it's highly underutilized, um, on a, you know, on an annual basis. So.
And who's gonna utilize late peak season?
Right, yeah, so.
Now, who is? Let's, it's a question. Is it gonna, who's gonna pull in there every day?
That's all, I think that would be, um, determined by pricing structures and what else, what your, what your group's doing on parking management in town. So are you gonna have a pricing strategy that drives people to the parking garage and results in a bigger operating loss? Or, or, or is it the charge that the, that the garage break even? We haven't, you know, we haven't set those standards on what we're, our expectation is, is of that enterprise.
Right. I mean, there's different ways that they look at parking garages. You can,
Right.
you can go on and read about it, and they, you know, some of it is, you have a low price to have the garage full.
Right, right, right.
There's a, you know, you have low utilization to get as much money, or you tie, the best way to do it is to tie it in and charge the least amount to get the most amount of people to use it, in concert with your on-street parking. And so, you know, on-street has to be more expensive than the garage. The most, you know, the most convenient spaces should cost the most. And so that, you know, those are the things that have to be worked out. You know, if this, and if the garage, but what if the garage, and if we price it in such a way, that all that happens is, this is one of the fears people have come to me and talked about. If we price it in such a way that, uh, you know, rich second homeowners block them out continually and, and take 150 of the 200 spots, and they'll pay any amount, then we've lost so many downtown spaces and haven't got anything for it. You know, they're, they're, or if it's full all winter, because, oh, we'll do a, you know, a winter deal, and you can park your car here. People, you know, so there's, then we have to get no utilization by the public. You know, so you have to look at this the same ways that people look at on-street, like with, a certain percent should be open all the time. So you have to be able to, you have to have a committee that looks at it and adjusts the prices to make sure that the utilization is in line with what you want to have happen. Uh, and politically, if people look and think, we're building a parking garage for Harbor Place, which a couple of people have told me, this thing's dead in the water. You know, we have to be building a garage for, you know, in a, for the, our intermodal transportation center for the benefit of the island. And we have to be able to sell that to the island if we want them to buy it. So I, you know, I, you know, I think if we could get that done, done, I'd be for it. If we, you know, if I were confident that's what we were doing, and we have that all done, that's great, but I don't know that we'll be there by then. And I think it, it would be kind of a wishful thinking vote from people. It'd be an uninformed vote.
I think we could put it in as a placeholder and try to get the information together. And, you know, maybe we need to think of it as, you know, what if, what if it was, what if it was operating just at enough to cover itself? Is the community willing to spend the money to build it?
But we won't know that. We won't be, we won't know that for, and not, before we have to, um, put the warrant in.
What is that date, Libby, for the, for the warrant in?
Well, I need to work it out in the timeline, but it's, it's gonna be early August, possibly end, end of July.
Well, but for the October, we could then request to table it if we're not ready. But we would really have till October. I think this is gonna be a missed, missed opportunity. I'm just gonna go on the record saying that I think that we're dealing with private entities who want us to move this forward and at least know if, if we're wanting to do it or not. And I think we're just wasting more and more of our time by not getting a good sense of the community. That is my opinion.
Okay. I think we have a motion. We wanna.
You got it. Okay. So there was a second? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Man, I don't have enough information. I'm, you know, I'm with you guys at this point. If I see the information and understand what it is we're providing, and whether, and I can determine whether the community will support it, then I would be bringing it forward. But I don't want to bring forward something that's gonna lose, or has, you know, I don't think has a chance of winning. Because then I think our opportunity is completely shot.
Yeah.
So.
So are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining or going with those guys until I see the information.
Which, which one? Pick one.
Pick one. All right, I'll go with those two.
Okay. So motion passes. And if something changes, we need to bring it back up? We can?
Exactly. If we, yeah, if we get more information and we feel, yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else? Libby, you had on your list for special town meeting? There was a.
But I, I think that's pretty much it.
That's the big ones.
You guys have anything else?
I didn't board. Okay. Committee reports.
I am going to Martha's Vineyard for the Cape Cod Selectmen's Meeting on marijuana, so.
Is that this Friday?
It is, yeah. Take lots of notes, ask lots of questions, so.
Isn't there another one in Boston for the Mass Municipal Association?
There, yeah.
Didn't I get an email on that? In May? I would love to go to that one, but that's, Boston. Oh. I like Boston. That's, that's a long trip. Assuming you can get there.
Martha's Vineyard isn't gonna be shorter.
No, it's harder. It actually might be harder.
Right, you have to get there around 9:00 AM.
Do you have to go the night before?
No, there's a 6:30, 5:00 AM play, so. Dedication.
Wow. Any, committee reports, comments?
I just have some comments. I, last week I raised, I discussed, uh, uh, really more for the public, uh, that this board is spending a lot of time and effort analyzing the requests by the Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund to, and I, and we're having a special, uh, we're having an executive session tomorrow. Uh, this board is to, and I'm right, I'm just reading right from the, the posted agenda, to consider the value of real property with regard to Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund GO2, uh, project, and also to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation with regard to that project. So, um, what I, what I hope is that we will sometime soon, um, because, you know, the longer this goes on, the more and more questions come up. And I'm hoping that this board will, uh, afford the public an opportunity to come and have a conversation about it, uh, both sides. And I know that, I think Attorney Cohen's recommending that, and I'm hoping we can do that in a not-too-distant future meeting.
I, I have one quick thing. Um, next, a week from tomorrow, there's the, at the, I believe at the school, the roundabouts, the, the public forum. I've been seeing lots of things on social media, and a lot of fear about roundabouts. And I did a two-minute drill, uh, thing on Facebook, explaining the, the safety advantages for pedestrians for a, a, a roundabout. And if the, if the big issue is, you know, kids walking to school, a roundabout is safer. I would want my kids going across roundabout for a lot of different reasons. It's, it's just safer. So I think a lot of the conversation is, it's not, um, safe for the kids, and it's not, or it's going to allow more cars, attract more cars to the island, you know, like a, like a bug light at night. I don't think that's the case. I think it's gonna make, make traffic more smooth. Um, there's less crashes, less injuries. So I think I encourage everyone, as many people, to come to this public forum and kind of get educated on, on roundabouts in general and ask questions. And I think the people will be a little more comfortable with it, on some of kind of the fear that I'm, that I'm seeing around town and hearing. Just wanted to put that out there.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, say, um, my family, a, a family member of mine had a pretty serious accident on Monday, and I just wanted to give kind of a shout out to our first responders, because they were really quite impressive. And, um, we just have some very great dedicated EMTUs on this island, and we're lucky.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all.